Hello, Girmay, or shall I say council member Girmay Zahalai?
Girmay is good, and shout out to you for saying it right, because I be hearing every variation in the book, so thank you.
I remember the first time I actually interviewed you, you were like, "How did you say that correctly?" And I was like, I actually watched about four of your interviews, and then I found one. And then I feel like, and this is also like a great thing, because we're gonna talk about these kids in a little bit, but I feel like you were talking to students, and you were telling them how to pronounce your name.
Definitely.
And that was how I was like, okay, Girmay, it was like, "That guy, Girmay," or something.
My guy, Girmay.
My guy, Girmay. And so that made it a lot easier for me to remember how to say your name. And so after that, I was like, rest is history.
A woman who does her research, look at you, you're a professional, Bessa, at night.
I try, I try, you know, that's why they keep me around. Now, let's honestly jump right into it. First of all, hopefully you're having a great day. Shout out to you for running for reelection.
Thank you.
As you should, I mean, let's go down this list of things you've accomplished over here, my friend.
What you got in front of you?
Let's see, launching the Youth Achievement Center campaign to build a housing and job center for unhoused youth in South Seattle. You also established a $5 million economic development program in unincorporated King County. Let's see, you expanded public transit options for residents of Skyway and other South King County neighborhoods by helping to secure 6 million via on-demand van service. Let's see what else you did. You also secured 5 million for youth mental health services, helped create participatory budgeting for unincorporated King County, led the funding and creation of a $2 million community-based gun violence prevention program. And according to Seattle Times, they are saying, "Girmay has been a tireless advocate for the people of King County. His leadership and dedication to our community has been invaluable, and I am pleased to support his reelection campaign."
Wow, wow, wow.
And there's more on here.
That's like, if I was an artist, you just read my Hot 100 Top Billboard Songs of All Time, thank you.
All the accolades, all the tags.
Thank you.
Now, let me, let me ask you this, and all of these things that you've done, I, my guess is that one of the things that, or a couple of the things that you are probably most proud of is, you know, securing the $5 million for youth mental health services, launching the Youth Achievement Center campaign to build housing and job centers for unhoused youth, and also, you know, everything that you've done for unincorporated King County. I want to say, last time that we talked, which was during the historic town hall, you had started working on helping people within Skyway have some ownership up at the top of the hill, like there were some buildings up there. What's going on with that right now?
So I think you're talking about, US Bank used to be in Skyway, and then they decided to leave Skyway. But because of the great organizing by the local community there, US Bank decided to donate their building to the community. And now we're working with the community there to establish the Skyway Resource Center. So this is gonna be a place where community members in this historically underserved neighborhood can go to get job training programs, can go to get public health access, to go to get education and workforce development. And that's just the great work that is possible when our elected partner with our community members, partner with the private sector, beautiful stuff can happen.
I absolutely agree with that, and I wish that there were more situations where more beautiful things are happening. But, you know, if we're just jumping right into things, you just said last night, you re-met with some students
Yeah.
back over at Rainier Beach, that we're talking about just the unsafe things that they're dealing with, which is so crazy to me. When I remember when I was in high school, middle school, and elementary, safety wasn't even a thought of mine. Like, I just knew I was safe. Like, it wasn't like, you know, I leave house and I feel safer, or I go to school and I feel safer, or when I'm not at school, I feel safer. I just felt safe.
Yeah.
You know, I knew a lot of the officers, I knew a lot of the bus drivers, some of the teachers, knew my parents. And it seems like that's not what's going on now. We've gotten some interviews and some video clips of you where you've been at some of these rallies with these students, and you've even gotten emotional, to where there was one student, and I believe the student said, "I feel safe when I leave my neighborhood and I go to like this community center."
Exactly.
And then somebody was like, "Well, that doesn't mean you feel safe, if you gotta have stipulations on it."
I thought that was one of the most powerful moments of that Public Safety Town Hall at Rainier Beach High School, where one student named Mario said that, well, the question that was asked to the students is, "Do you feel safe in your neighborhood?" And that one student said, "I feel safe if I'm at Rainier Beach Community Center." And another student raised his hand and said, "That means you don't feel safe. If you put a condition on it, if you say, 'I feel safe if,' that means your neighborhood is not safe." And it just made me realize how so often when we are living under oppressive circumstances, we can internalize that oppression and feel like it's normal. And so when somebody says, "Yeah, oh yeah, I feel safe, I feel safe when I'm not outside", that tells you that they don't feel safe at all.
Basically, you feel safe with the blinds closed. Alrighty, we got some work to do around here.
That's right. And so I thought that town hall was so powerful. Shout out to everybody who organized it, because, you know, in our, in our city, in our county, when we talk about public safety, it's only a particular type of people whose voices get heard around public safety. I almost never see mainstream media covering the thoughts, concerns, and priorities of our high school students, like the kids at Rainier Beach High School. And so shout out to organizations like Converge, which highlighted their voices and elevated their voices. We need to do a lot more of that.
You know, not only does more of that need to be done, I would say more council members like yourself need to be in these meetings, so that way you can see it and hear it firsthand, rather than just seeing something on Twitter. So let's talk a little bit about what happened last night when you re-met up with these kids. And, you know, a lot of times, I feel like you do a lot of things like this, but you don't always publicize it, because it's still important for you to do it. So how did this extra meeting get set up?
So I went to the Rainier Beach High School Public Safety Town Hall, where there were a panel of students talking about what they need to feel safe in their neighborhoods. But I never want to be the type of elected official that goes to those things, makes a bunch of promises, and then you never hear from them again, because that's how you create disillusionment. That's how you create despair in our students. You have to show them that when they speak up, good things happen for them. Otherwise, they will feel like they speak up and nothing happens, and that's how you create despair and disillusionment and disconnection. And so myself, Councilmember Morales, and Marty Jackson from Southeast Network, organized a meeting to follow up with those students. And we heard the details, you know, what do you actually want to see in your neighborhood to feel safe? And that's what that follow-up meeting was for, and those students reminded us that, "Hey, we don't want to stop hearing from you. We want follow-up. We want accountability. We want to see progress." And that's something that we committed to them.
So what are some of the things that, you know, you guys have at least talked about doing to make these kids feel more safe in some of these meetings?
It's so powerful to listen to these kids, because if you let the mainstream media or mainstream society talk about what society needs to feel safe, you hear one set of things. You know, what are the most frequent things that you see if you open up the newspaper? You see more police, we need more jails, we need more prosecution. And then you hear from these students, who statistically speaking, are the students who should feel most unsafe. You know, they are disproportionately more likely to suffer from gun violence and other acts of violence. And so obviously, they are the students who disproportionately we should listen to more. But I never hear the solutions that they're proposing when I open up the newspaper. And what are the types of things that they're asking for? They want Rainier Beach Community Center to have late night again. And for people who don't remember late night, you remember late night, Bessa, you know, I had, I have.
I remember late night!
I remember going to late night when I was a kid. I didn't go to Rainier Beach Community Center. I went to Rainier Community Center closer to Alaska and that street. But late night is a place where students, according to them, feel like they have somewhere to go that's safe, where they feel more connected to their community, where they have resources, where they have mentors, where they get to do something fun, and get out of the streets and not feel like they are vulnerable to attack and things like that. And so we need more of that. That's what they're asking for. They're asking for more after-school programs. They're asking for more things that they are interested in. They're asking for more safe places to go. They're asking for more stable housing. They're asking for more mentorship. They're asking for more safe passage mentors who are out on the street greeting people. They call them blue coats or corner greeters. There are so many different programs out there where it is community members being outside, activating the space, providing food and handshakes and connection. That's the kind of stuff that they're asking for. And of course, more mental health counselors. They're saying that in their schools, sometimes these schools have thousands of students and only one mental health counselor, and that's just not enough. And so those are the kinds of things that they're asking for. And yet, again, I have to emphasize this, when you let mainstream society talk about public safety, you never hear about those things. You hear about more police, more jails, more prosecution. And I'm not saying those things don't have any role, but of course, we need to elevate the voices of the people who are most likely to be victims of violence.
Well, that and, you know, again, like I said earlier, when I was younger, I didn't have this feeling of being unsafe. But we had late night, you know, we had, you know, moments where we could go up to Garfield, and we could even do a late, like, they had their own late night there. I just can't remember what it was, but it was at Garfield Community Center. You know, like, we had late nights all over the city. They just all had their own names. And then as I got older, I was like, do they still do that anymore?
It feels like there are less and less of those opportunities for our kids.
Which gives our kids, like, basically, face an opportunity to do things that they shouldn't be doing that late at night, because, you know, they don't have that mentor that's with them. It's like that preventative care is just not there for these students anymore.
What I found out last night, talking to city officials, is that during the pandemic, a lot of these community centers closed down completely. And so what happens when there's nowhere for young people to go, to feel connected, to have a safe place to go, to have mentors, to have resources? What do they do? Maybe they're out in the streets.
Yeah.
And I'm sure that has some connection to do with the increased levels of violence that our kids were suffering throughout the pandemic. And so we gotta just do a much better job of providing kids the opportunities, the resources, the safe places to go.
So before we, you know, go and change the topic off of these kids, my question is, to me, creating late night again sounds common sense. It sounds very easy. Okay, flip a switch, get some volunteers, do it, okay? Having more therapists and psychiatrists in schools, I had a therapist when I was in high school.
Oh, were you?
Yeah. I went to Franklin for one year, and I had a therapist there.
Shout out to the Quakers.
Yeah, and then when I went to Cleveland High School, I had one there. Okay, my cousin was the principal. I was out of there.
Okay, okay, okay.
Life was a little easier over there. But, you know, it was helpful for me. And they also made sure that if I didn't come to one of my therapy sessions, they would come up and find me. And usually, I would be having like a depressed moment, and they'd be like, "Yeah, exactly, let's go." You know what I'm saying? But they actually really cared. So my question is, what would it take, at least within your district, to make sure that this is something that these kids can actually have? I mean, it's one thing to ask for it, but how can we actually make it happen?
Yeah, you know, there's obviously the resource side of the issue. We need more funding, more resources to go into these schools. And it's also a prioritization issue, you know? If we are all committed to equity, like we say we are, that means we need everybody in the state putting concerted effort into certain neighborhoods, and certain communities who are disproportionately impacted by the issues we're trying to solve. That's not what always happens. What happens is, understandably, we have this district mindset, and this, you know, "I gotta, I gotta take care of the people who elected me" mindset, and I gotta give to the loudest voices in the room, the most, the voices that have the most access in the room. The kids at Rainier Beach High School don't have access to power. They don't have wealth. They don't have the biggest platforms. They don't have the strongest moneyed relationships with elected officials. And so it's very easy, if you don't have authentic relationships with those students and the people who serve them, to be out of sight, out of mind, and just put resources in the places that are most effectively lobby you. So it's both a resource issue and restructuring our mindsets as decision-makers and elected leaders to say, "Let's put the greatest amount of resources into the places that have the greatest needs" without respect to just districts and, you know, who elected me and all this stuff. Because at the end of the day, we'll solve our problems when we put the greatest focus on the areas that need them most.
Now, growing up, and I feel like your upbringing had something to do with this. When I'm watching like different videos, and you're talking about how the kids feel so unsafe, you usually get very emotional about these things.
Yeah.
Even like, you know, and that's not a bad thing, but you know, even at the inauguration that I went to, you even got emotional there, talking about that. What would you say is something that you want the kids to know that you are for sure working towards for them if you are re-elected?
First of all, let me just say that I wish I was one of those public speakers who, when they get emotional, they can channel that emotion into being a better public speaker. For me, even if you came to my rally this past weekend, my emotions just stopped me dead in the tracks, and I can't talk anymore, which is not, it's not a good thing for, for public speaking. But what I want the kids to know is that when they speak, good things happen. That's the whole thing that I want to instill in them. I just, it keeps me up at night, every night, thinking that these kids are being asked to come speak at this panel or come to this meeting, and then they do all this work and nothing changes. That's how you break people's spirits. That's how you make them feel like there's no hope. And so I want to make them feel like, at least, at least in the short term, like, we can get quick resources out, and we can make quick changes happen, and then continue to work on the big, long-term things. And so what I would want them to know is that change is possible. All these problems that we're seeing are decisions made by policymakers. And if we can push those policymakers to make different decisions, different outcomes are possible. That's what I want to instill in them.
Now, for Skyway, what are we also doing currently to make Skyway better? You know, we always talk about how Skyway is an area that is within Washington State that has like the most black people in it.
That's right.
Yet it's very underfunded, which I don't want to say it gives Flint vibes, because it's not that bad. But like, you know what I mean, to where it's like, "Okay, this is the area where all the black people are. We put them there, we go on about a day, and they figure it out." But it obviously doesn't create the safest area or the safest environment for some people, you know what I mean? So what are we doing currently to make Skyway also safer?
Just so people have a better idea of what Skyway is and what it's facing. When I was a child, I grew up, my childhood years, in South Seattle, in public housing like Rainier Vista and New Holly, which was called Holly Park back then. And then in my teenage years, we moved to Skyway. Holly Park, Rainier Vista, South Seattle, these are not rich areas. These are also low-income areas. But because I was in, within an incorporated city of Seattle, I had all kinds of amenities and services at my disposal. I had frequent public transportation near me. I had community centers. I had after-school activities. And then suddenly, when I was a teenager, we moved to Skyway, which is just a few blocks south of Rainier Beach, right?
Literally.
It's just a few blocks out. But because we crossed this arbitrary legal line dividing Seattle from unincorporated King County, suddenly, we lived in a place that had one bus line that was infrequent and almost non-existent on the weekends, no community center, no after-school activities. When I think about my childhood and my teenage years, the most damaging period of my life and the lives of my brother and sister were when we lived in Skyway, because we were so isolated and didn't have public transit, and didn't have anything to do after school, and didn't have anything to help us grow and learn because of the isolation and under-investment in that neighborhood. So I feel super passionately about this, because I don't want other kids, growing up in Skyway, to feel like that. And so what we're doing is, again, getting all of our colleagues, all of the elected officials, all of our community partners and government partners to be intentional about putting more investment into this neighborhood. And so we've been able to get $10 million of seed money to start a community center there. We've been able to do, like you said, $6 million to expand public transit options there. We've been able to put $2 million into starting the Skyway Resource Center over there. We've been able to put millions of dollars into affordable housing, both rental side and homeownership there. And so over and over and over again, we're trying to get the word out that, hey, if you're talking about equity, if you're gonna say Black Lives Matter, Skyway has to matter. This is the home to the highest proportion of black people in our state. It's super diverse, so many languages spoken, and yet it is so low-income and so under-invested. And you probably feel it every time you drive through there, Bessa, you know, if you're gonna drive from Seattle to Renton, suddenly halfway through your trip, you're gonna look around and be like, whoa, where, what happened to all the sidewalks?
And then it's also like, not as many people that drive through there. It's like, you'll be stuck in gridlocked traffic, and you get up to Skyway, and it's like a straight chute?
That's it, yep.
It's a straight chute. Now, I had a question about that. Where is it? Da-da-da-da-da. This is why I take nudes. Middle Housing.
Yep.
I-135, and I feel like that kind of goes in with Skyway, because sometimes, things can become a little more dangerous if you don't have a comfortable place to live.
Absolutely.
You know, I was, I was watching, not even I was watching, I was reading a status. I won't say who it was, because they had that status blocked where it was friends only, but owns a business out here, kept having like homeless people breaking in, there was a fire, windows are broken, they're doing drugs in there, someone's like passed, like, it's craziness. But all of this is happening because you have all these people on the streets.
Yep.
They obviously have nowhere to go. They don't have like beds, or, you know, maybe it's a situation where someone actually needs to recommend them, and they don't have anyone to recommend them, so they can't just do walk-ins. And so we'll get to like the health crisis of that all in a second. But I want to talk about Middle Housing and I-135, because to me, it sound, from watching the video that Nikita Oliver ended up voicing over, it makes a lot of sense to me. But it's kind of like I had said before, some things make so much sense that I'm not understanding why it's not already a thing.
Yep.
So what has, one, if you can explain I-135 to those that don't understand it. But also, the follow-up question is, why is this already not something that's happening?
That's a great question. I don't know how the answer to why it's not already happening.
Because it's common sense, you know?
I wonder that about a lot of things in our state. I'm like, there's so many common sense things, and it's just not happening for a lot of reasons. That's a conversation for another day. But I support I-135, which is the social housing initiative. People are gonna get to vote on it next month, actually. I think it's February.
February?
Yeah, February something. People should vote yes on I-135, and that would set up a social housing, public development authority to be able to build social housing, which is housing that doesn't have a profit motive. It is housing that would provide homes to people of super-low-income background, you know, 0% to 30% area median income, all the way up to like 60% and middle-income people. And the mechanics behind how it's self-funding can get a little bit complicated. But the whole idea is to make sure that people of all income levels have homes, and you take the profit motive out of these buildings. So it's not, you know, landlords and all these other associations and shareholders pocketing profit, but the profit being reinvested back into the building and providing more homes and opening up more social housing options. So I fully support it, and I do think it's something that everybody should vote yes on.
Yeah, it's just one of those things where I'm like, why isn't this already there? I mean, we have like something similar to it, but it's not something to where there's more people that can access it, because you pretty much have to make like under $40,000 a year, for the most part, out here to even be a part of it. And we all know, the way Seattle was set up, if you're not at least making a minimum of $60,000 to $70,000 a year, it's a little hard out here.
Yeah, the thing I would say to people is that the need in our, in our state for housing types is diverse, and so the solution needs to be diverse too. There's no one thing that's gonna solve our housing crisis. So people who are like, "No, not social housing. What we need is X. Oh." Or, "No, not homeownership. What we need is Y." Or, "No, not shelter. What we need is permanent support." No, no, no. There is no one thing. The need is diverse, so the solution has to be diverse to do. We need everything.
Have you talked to any of the kids about, like, substance abuse issues? You know, I was recently watching the news, and I saw some students basically doing fentanyl in the bathroom. And I was like, okay, you know, like, I'm an only child, so like, the only thing that I really know about that's going on with kids is if I see something on social media and the news or someone tells me. So I was shocked that that was even a thing. Have you been able to talk to these students about the different drug use that they've maybe seen in their, their schools or in their communities, and different things that they're like, yo, can we do this to like, kind of like fix this situation?
Yeah, they feel like they don't have enough support. They don't feel like they have enough after-school activities. They don't feel like they have enough counselors. They don't feel like they have enough healthcare that would provide them the support they need to get through a substance use disorder. And those aren't just feelings, those are facts.
Those are things.
Those are real facts, that there is not enough infrastructure to respond to these issues. And then when you think about the fact that our students are facing an unprecedented mental health crisis at the same time, which of course is intersectionally related to the substance use disorder crisis, this is all alarming. You know, the stat that I always go to is that the Center for Disease Control, the CDC, the same organization that responded to the pandemic, they study mental health of youth, and they found that in 2009, the percentage of high school students who are reporting feelings of depression, anxiety, isolation was something like 26%. And they studied it again in 2021, just a decade later, and that number almost doubled to like 40-something percent. In just a matter of a decade, the amount of depression that our high school students are feeling almost doubled? You gotta ask yourself, what is going on? What's going on? Of course, we don't have enough stuff to respond to it, but also, what's leading to it in the first place? And we can talk about that all day.
And, you know, we can definitely talk about that, because even, so I found this report where it's like overdose deaths increased by 20% between 2019 and 2020, and then 39% between 2020 and 2021. And then apparently, 70% of those overdoses in 2022 was from fentanyl compared to 10% in 2018.
Yep, the opioid crisis is very real. So many people are experiencing overdoses, even in our unhoused community. We're seeing unprecedented rates of death amongst our unhoused community, and that is absolutely fueled by the fentanyl crisis. And our kids are suffering from it. So many people are suffering from it. And that's why I'm working to provide a response to this, places where people can go in and get care, whether it's for their mental health disorders or their substance use disorders. And that's what the Crisis Care Centers initiative is that I've been working on, and that will be passed, hopefully, out of my King County Council next week.
Now, speaking of that, say this is passed, right? Say next week passes unanimously, and you're able to just run full steam ahead. How long would it take to get something like this up and going? And how do you plan on getting the word out to where people really do know that they have the option to go to these places, rather than just being out on the streets?
Yeah, so a few different things there in terms of the timeline. There are some things that we can do really quickly, because a part of the levy would go to fund the workforce. You know, we are, we are seeing unprecedented levels of vacancies in this work, because we're talking about the most difficult work known to human beings. And yet, workers in that field are being paid poverty wages to do such hard work. So there's issues with retention, safety, pay, and all those things. I think pretty quickly, we can start paying people more, creating apprenticeships, pipelines toward these industries as careers. And then in terms of that physical infrastructure, places where people can go, there are some buildings that already have some of the components of what we want a full-fledged crisis care center to look like, and it will take just some upgrades to make it into the thing that we want. And then other places, those crisis care centers just don't exist, and they will have to, we will have to go through the process of siting, of contracting, of building, and that could take years and years and years. So there are different stages. Some things will take longer than others.
Is it, is there like a possibility where you would be able to have something up by like April? If it were approved as soon as next week?
Well, the vote itself is gonna happen in April.
Wait, I feel like that does happen.
Let me take you through the stages.
Okay.
What's happening next week is, my council, the King County Council, will vote the law itself out. And once we pass that, we're just green-lighting the law to go on to the ballot, and then the public will have to vote in April. So it's not just us making the decision. You and you will have to make the decision too in April. You're gonna have to vote yes on the crisis care centers levy, and that would go to provide about $1.25 billion of funding across nine years to build these crisis care centers, to increase our capacity of long-term residential health beds for people who need long-term recovery, and also to support the workforce like I talked about before.
Okay, and then, you know, speaking of workforce, you know, they basically made it to where there's a lot more people that can get free Orca cards. And I know that public transportation was also something that was very big within, within your initiatives.
Yep.
I recently did an interview with KUOW, and one of the questions that they asked is, "Do you feel that we're moving closer to free transportation in general?"
Well, this year, or this past year, I was proud to be one of the prime sponsors of legislation that makes public transportation free for everybody age 18 and under. So all youth already get to ride public transit for free. And that was able to happen, because the state legislature, through some federal funding as well, was able to give us the resources to make that a possibility. And so I hope that the state and our federal government places an even larger investment into our public transit system so that we can make mobility and public transit free for everybody, because I do think mobility is a human right, and I would like us to move toward making this a free amenity for, for everybody. But in the meantime, as King County, it's very hard to make it free on our own, because... Because we fund everything through property taxes and sales taxes. And what we're not gonna do is increase people's buying power, low income people's ability to buy food. Or low income seniors' ability to afford their mortgage, increasing property ta- taxes to make public transit free. It's, it's a difficult trade-off to make.
Okay, well, that makes a lot of sense. And so obviously, that's another thing where it's like, okay, it sounds easier than done and it's possible. But it's gonna take some layers to come out and maybe even some more extra research. Um, okay, so we're gonna jump into something that I like to call Six Randoms with Beza.
Uh-oh, you gonna get me in trouble? They're good questions, right?
They're never like bad. This is the fun part of the show. Um, number one, what is your favorite spot to eat at in Skyway?
Ooh, uh, I just ate lunch yesterday at a place called Salima Specialties. It's a relatively new restaurant. Um, I believe it's, uh, street food from community members who are known as Cham. Which is, I think, uh, Vietnamese Muslim communities. Hopefully, they forgive me if I get that wrong. But it is such good food. You have chicken, uh, chicken kebabs and, uh, chicken on a skewer. And, um, uh, what are those called when you got like lentils inside of, uh, um, inside of a little dough? Samosa, samosa. Sambusa, samosa, one of those things, yeah.
Sounds good though.
It's really good. I encourage people to check it out. It was so good.
How do you relax whenever you actually have time to do that?
Oh man, I, first of all, my favorite thing in the world is basketball. So I play basketball every Sunday night. With a bunch of homies and, uh, there's another league that I play at with a bunch of people that I work with. And so that is my favorite way to get stuff off my mind and get some energy. And you know, once you hit a certain age, that old, old man competitiveness comes out of you. And so I'm out there just letting all my aggression out on the court.
Like, take that. If you had, if someone gave you a billion dollars tomorrow. And we are speaking these things into existence.
For me, the biggest investment is providing people a safe home, a safe place to go to. So I would invest it in some homes for our youth, a safe place to go, like the Youth Achievement Center. Like we talked about yesterday that I'm working on with a bunch of community-based organizations. Uh, homes for our seniors who are unable to work and provide for themselves anymore. You know, I think about people like my mom who worked so hard, two, three jobs, graveyard shift, working, making minimum wage. And she worked until she busted both of her knees. And if she didn't have kids to take care of her, I don't know what she would be doing right now. So providing homes for people who cannot work, who have, who are disabled or who are seniors, who just don't have enough income. A safe place to live and just be able to exist is something that really is close to my heart.
That's fair. Um, what were your first thoughts when you found out that Nike Town and Regal Meridian sixteen were closing?
Beza, you grew up here too and you know, those two places. Those two places are not just places. They were places that we grew up going to. I watched all my movies at Regal. Um, I used to go get shoes on, on the weekends at Nike Town. Um, and so if you do, definitely feels like some pillars of our childhood are gone. And so we definitely need to find ways of making sure that downtown is a fun, safe, thriving place for people to go to. And just more places for our young people to go, cause I think that's, those are the places where we were spending time when I was kids. And I wanna make sure that we're not losing after school activities and things for our youth.
Yeah, um, do you think, uh, that the new convention center is going to help revive downtown?
I think so. I think so. You know, I will, I'm personally hosting an event there in March. And so having a big gathering space, uh, for both.
It's nice in there.
It's nice in there for both our, our current residents who live in Seattle and King County. But also having space for people from out of town to come and convene and make Seattle and King County a hub for intellectual discussion. And business and ideas. Those are things that we should absolutely promote.
Awesome. And then one misconception about being a council member.
Oh, this is a good one. What's a misconception? Uh, I guess how I spend my time. What, what do you, what do you think a council member does day to day? What are you, like, not to put you on the spot, but I'm just wondering how people think. Do it, be real.
I had a, I had a random thought about it and then I met you and I was like, so I guess they are normal people. It's like you, like, in, in, in your head, you think of like a council member and you're, they're running around like with someone like an Olivia Pope. And all they're doing is like reading Wong articles and highlighting things and constantly working on new legislation. But I know that that's like a part of your life, right? You know what I mean? It's like that, like, obviously, it's, it's not even like your job. It genuinely is a part of your life. But that's not a hundred percent. Like you gotta eat at some point. You gotta take a nap. You gotta do something to relax yourself. You have family, you have friends. So I know that you guys have normal lives. It's just not as frequent as everyone else.
Yeah, I'm so glad you, you mentioned that because such a big goal of mine is to make public office more accessible. And make it seem like it's something, some of our youth who go to Rainier Beach High School, for example, they feel like this is a path for me. I can grow up and impact my community through policy. I want them to feel that way. I don't want them to have misconceptions about what being an elected official is. And so, yeah, there is voting and there's legislation and there is some shaking hands and kissing babies like you see on TV. But mostly, it's just me in rooms, talking to people who are going through something. Asking them what are their ideas and then working with them to make those ideas a reality so that we can have the community that we all wanna see. It's a dream job because I get paid to wake up every day and make my community better. And I want our youth who go to Rainier Beach and Cleveland and Franklin and Garfield, uh, to feel like this is a path for them too.
I love that. Well, shoot, Grandma, look, I wanna thank you so much for coming down to iHeart Media on a Friday. And spending this time with me. Real quick, I will have you look into that camera right there. And if there is anything that you want to say to your residents or anyone that you want to actually vote for you and maybe they were thinking about voting for someone else. Because I forgot to mention, when I first started doing my interview with Grandma, I was like, oh, he doesn't have any opponents. And now you do have an opponent. So is there anything that you want to say to anyone that may be thinking about voting for your opponent?
Uh, well, uh, you know, I don't wanna make it too much about me, but we have a lot of work to do in King County and in Seattle. On affordable housing, on behavioral health, on climate change, on anti-displacement stuff. And so I just invite you to reach out to me, especially if I'm your council member. I represent District Two, which includes the University District. Capitol Hill, the Central District, South Seattle and Skyway. Reach out to me, tell me what you're going through and let's partner up to make this a region and a district that is a world-class place. Where all of our neighbors feel like they have the best neighborhood to live in.